Sometimes I just turn my phone on silent and I try to be my own Joe Rogan's Jamie over here.
And well, my hard part is I've got like five or six employees that are on emergency bypass.
Yeah.
So even if it's silent, it's gonna ring. So.
That's awesome. Well, I appreciate you sitting down today and chatting.
Thanks for having me on. I'm really excited about this.
I like your hat and your sweater there.
I liked your decal on the back of your Tesla. That's perfect.
Well, driving a Tesla, you'll just get flipped off in Idaho. So I'm like, how do I show people that I really love guns?
Jiu Jitsu and Madison Armory.
Yep. And CrossFit is usually fairly conservative. So CrossFit, Jiu Jitsu and Madison Armory and we're good.
It's perfect.
It is good. Um, what are you doing?
Oh, you know, just biggest thing has been Madison Army. We've gotten that, uh, we've gotten the new building going. We've got the indoor range going. That's been, that's been fun. It's been a big learning curve.
Yeah.
Definitely stepping up from that small building we were in before.
Yeah.
To this like massive facility. I mean, we quadrupled the amount of retail space we have. We added the range. Um, that's been a whole new thing for us. So that's been busy. Um, on top of that though, I'm running for city council here in Rexburg right now. So that's, it's been fun juggling that the past couple of months. The city council stuff has been really good. A lot of good feedback. There's a lot of exciting things that the city has going for it and hopefully we can get the right people on board to help.
Yeah.
Guide and push the city the right direction.
What kind of started pushing you in that direction? What went, hey, I'm building a, a large second amendment based business and making it awesome and helping with some freedom and, and then now we're going to move into some public service.
So I mean, the public service side of things probably started mainly as a result of, uh, shoot. I don't, I'm sure you experienced some of this, like 2020, there was the whole COVID thing. I don't want to make this about COVID.
Oh, no.
It's so, it's so back and forth. There's people on both sides of it. And unfortunately, like it's, it shouldn't be a polarizing topic, but it is. And that's what kind of got me involved to begin with. I'm sure you remember when city council decided that they were gonna, they were gonna mandate masks and they were gonna make businesses the enforcers of it.
Yeah.
And the penalty for not enforcing it was fines and then they were gonna yank your business license.
Yeah.
A lot of people are really upset about that. I think a lot of people who left, right, center, wherever, realized that that wasn't necessarily the, the route that we needed to go.
Yeah.
And that's kind of what caused me to get more involved and be looking at city politics way more. And then with the new building, there was some stuff here and there as far as, hey, like, why can't we do this this way? Why can't we do that that way? And as a result of seeing those things and seeing how there was a lot of inefficiencies there, it was like, shoot, maybe, maybe we need some people that are more business minded. And then you look at the city council makeup currently and it's literally everybody that's on city council right now is either going to be, they've been in government their whole career, whether it's working for some government entity, or they've been in public or higher education their whole career.
Yeah.
So it's kind of hard because you've got these people that are making decisions for developers, homeowners, businesses. They don't necessarily have any experience developing anything in Rexburg. They don't have any experience growing a business in Rexburg. And we've got this city that's experiencing massive growth. I mean, if you look at the 2010 census to the 2020 census, we added what another, it was like 20,000 people.
Yeah.
To Rexburg. Um, and as a result of that, I think it's kind of hard because you've got people that are making decisions that they're doing a great job. They're trying their best. But they've never really made decisions at scale. You've got people that, I mean, honestly, in some cases, you've got people in city council that they've never made, probably never made a decision outside of buying their home that's been bigger than that. And that's the biggest number that they've ever run a budget for. And they're making decisions for essentially what it is, is it's, it's an $80 million business. You've got a city that's growing and we need to be investing in that stuff to grow correctly. And that was, that was a huge reason I wanted to get involved because I don't necessarily think that we're making, the city's not making wrong steps currently. They're not doing anything that's super detrimental, but I don't think they're investing where they need to in order to build the foundation so that we can grow over the next 10, 15, 20 years.
Yeah.
And that was a big reason I wanted to get involved.
Well, it makes it difficult because each person that you just talked about, they're good people.
Oh yeah. They're all great people. Yeah.
It's just, government is so weird because yes, they've never made those large decisions. Yes, they're good people. Doesn't mean they're making the right decisions or the best decisions. So they might even make a good decision, but there were five other better decisions that could be made. And sometimes when we're leaning on one, two, three people to be the sole indicators of what happens in the entire city.
Yep.
It's problem.
You've got seven people that are all making, that are all making the decisions for the city. You've got six city council members. You've got the mayor as well. And the hard part about that is, is I mean, currently on city council, um, I mean, you've got Mike Walker on there that's owned a couple of businesses. Everybody else that's on there has no, no business experience. It's only their education or government. And it's just, I worry that, I don't necessarily even worry. Like there's a group think mentality. There are people I know on city council that they're voting one way, not because they necessarily want to vote that way, but because they know that everyone else is gonna vote that way. So why should I stay out? Yeah. And well, and they don't want to be the dissenting opinion. And I think, I think that's the hard part. And because you don't have people that are willing to be that dissenting voice.
Yeah.
It just, it's leading to, I think, some group think mentality.
Absolutely.
Which is, I think, dangerous when you're trying to grow a city.
Yeah. And, uh, I mean, on a national and a world level, we're seeing that. It's a scale that we've never seen before. We're more polarized right now. I mean, obviously I've only been around for 36 years, but I'm.
It's bad.
I'm a deep studier of history. Pretty sure we're more polarized right now than maybe we've been since the Spanish Inquisition.
Oh, I can believe it. And I think, I think a lot of it too is just the fact that we want to hit, if you look at society as a whole, we've all, we're so enveloped in social media, that instant dopamine hit of Instagram scrolling quick and whatever. And the issue is that we're trying to apply that to conversations. We want a yes or no answer on X, Y, and Z topic. And we don't want to dig deeper and we don't want to have, we don't have, have long form conversations like this. We don't want to sit down and, and talk about stuff. I had a guy, this was probably two weeks ago now that called me, goes, hey, I've got three questions I want to answer, you'd answer? Yes or no answers? I don't need any explanations, just yes or no. First question was, did you get the COVID vaccine? No. Did you wear masks? No. And then the third one was, um, what was it? Do you think that the election was stolen? And on that one, I kind of backed him. All right, look like.
Yeah.
That, that's a pretty hard, like yes or no question on that one.
Yeah.
Do I think weird things happen in every election? Yeah. Do I necessarily think it stole things one way or another? I don't know. I'm not educated enough to make that.
Yeah.
I don't need to have an opinion on that for city council.
For sure.
Um, but then it was, he kind of wanted to end the phone call there and was kind of done asking the questions. And so we ended up, I was like, hey, since you asked me those three questions, can I ask the same three questions back to you? I want to know what your opinion on this is. And I want to, I want to hear what you have to say about it. It was very obvious that he sat on the opposite side of me on some of those issues.
Yeah.
But I don't think, what ended up, in my opinion, coming about was that he didn't necessarily, he wanted the yes or no answers. But when we sat down and we, I mean, we ended up talking for 40 minutes, I think afterwards.
Good. Cause that's the important part.
Yeah. And we had a conversation. It was very obvious that he and I don't agree on a lot of stuff, but I think that when it comes to 90, 95% of what's going on in the city of Rexburg, we agree and it's not necessarily, okay, did you wear a mask? Did you get vaccinated? There's plenty of people that couldn't wear masks for health reasons. There's plenty of people that couldn't get vaccinated for health reasons.
Yeah.
My doctor, for instance, told me, hey, with your, I've got really bad allergies. I'm allergic to everything under the sun. And one of the big side effects was anaphylaxis with the vaccines. He told me straight up, you're more likely to die of anaphylaxis as a result of the shot than you are of dying of COVID. There is zero benefit to you getting the shot.
Yeah.
Okay, cool. But we don't want to have those questions. We don't want to dig deeper on that. We just want it to be yes or no. Like, did you do this? Did you not do this?
Yeah. It's so rough because it, it just would have been, and it sounds like you did the right thing and you had a good conversation with him, but hey, I have three questions for you and I'll, I want yes or no answers. Well, I'll give you yes or no answers if we can discuss them after I give them.
Yeah. And that was the, the beautiful part about it was we sat and we talked about it. We had a conversation and, and it was, like I said, it was very obvious that he had different core political beliefs than I do, maybe at a national or state level.
Yeah.
But when it came to what's happening in the city of Rexburg, we agreed on almost everything.
Exactly.
And so it's like, let's, let's sit down, let's talk, let's have a conversation and let's come to a conclusion together. Cause unfortunately, even at the city level, certain things that shouldn't necessarily be polarized one way or the other, that we could sit down and have a conversation about, aren't necessarily happening. And I think that that's both at the city level. As far as like on the city side of it, it's on the citizen's side of it. But we need to sit down and have a conversation about it.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Like, I think a good example of that, um, and this is another, this is a polarizing topic within the city. There's that East Parkway corridor that they're talking about. I mean, I don't know if you're aware of that. Um, but they want to extend university basically from where, uh, was it Golden West Credit Union or McDonald's is there? And they want to run it up to the top of the hill.
Yeah.
The idea being is that what they're able to do is alleviate some of the pressure off of university. And then they're going to come back around behind, um, basically behind some of the neighborhoods there in the temple. And then they're going to come down, come across the Teton River and shoot it back almost to basically to Moody Road. So you've got a different way. It's essentially a parallel road to Second East and Main Street, or a parallel road to Second East here in town. And there was, it was, it was a hotly contested thing. They talked about it in city council and there's a couple of neighborhoods out there that they're like, hey, we don't necessarily want X, Y, and Z thing.
Yeah.
We're worried about how this is going to impact our community. And I think the city to an extent, like you read through the minutes, you watch, um, like you listen to it. The city basically was like, hey, this is our plan. This is what we're doing. And they didn't necessarily lay out, hey, these are the other plans that we had, and this is why this is the best result. And this is how we're going to change, how this is going to impact your community the least.
Yeah.
And as a result, instead of it being just like, we're, instead of going in and explaining those things, it was, hey, we're doing this and people were up in arms about it.
Yeah.
As they should be, but I think, I think they just needed to be explained better. I think there are some better options on the table too. I think it did cause the city to sit back and go, hey, maybe we need to take into account X, Y, and Z. And that dialogue started there, but it could have been had beforehand.
For sure. And that dialogue, I think, is just being missed. You know, things happen in government, whether it's at a local level or state, national, now it's getting to be global, right?
Right.
And it's like, the citizens go, wait, what are you doing? Well, we're just doing what you want. I'm your representative. No, I voted you in and now you're making all the decisions that we disagree with many times because of special interest groups or promises that were made before an election started.
Yep.
And it's, it's highly detrimental.
Well, and I think that's another hard part too, is like politicians come in with this idea of like, I'm going to promise this. I'm going to promise that. And it's like, number one, I, I go into this fully knowing, I do not understand everything that happens at the city level. Um, I'm trying to like, I've had the opportunity to sit down with the public works director, sat down with the CFO of the city, sat down with the mayor, asked them questions about their jobs, like, what are the key issues that you think are going on here? What are ways that you think things could be represented better by the city? And what are things that people don't necessarily understand? So I'm trying to understand that, but I go into it knowing, I'm not going to understand everything.
Do you know that makes you not a politician? Thank you.
And that's the thing that I don't, I don't want to go into this as a politician. I want to go into this as a, hey, I live here in Rexburg. I'm heavily invested in Rexburg. I'm a business owner in Rexburg. I want to see Rexburg grow. I want to see Rexburg succeed. And I think that we need to make a couple of, a couple of degree course corrections so that that can happen and we can set things up, have a foundation to grow.
Yeah.
So.
Well, um, I think you can make that happen. As soon as you had told me that you were, you were thinking about running, I was like, oh, good. Because what we need to do is take people that don't want to run and talk them into running.
Well, I was trying to talk you into doing that too. Like, cause I think that that's ultimately the issue is that the people that should be running, either one, they don't have the time
Yeah.
to run and do this, or they don't want to do it, even though they should be the ones doing it. I don't want to do it. I don't have the time to do it. But I think that, I think that we need to make some changes and we need to change things a couple of degrees to get us on the right track.
Yeah. I feel my, my role right now in government is being the people.
And we need that.
So, you know, a government should be by the people, of the people and for the people. Uh, I can talk with people like you, throw it out on a fairly large platform, target it to Rexburg. Uh, I reached out to many people yesterday and said, hey, gonna be chatting with Rob Woodall. What do you guys want to know? Like, let's, let's talk about.
I'm excited to hear what they have to say.
Yeah, absolutely. No, I, I think it's really important. Um, not against anybody as a politician, because people are good generally. It's also interesting when a politician gets up and they go, and they do this so often, more often now than ever, I know better than you.
Oh, yeah.
And that's a big problem.
It's a huge.
Because typically speaking, politicians are dumb. And I, I like, I don't mean that to each one individually. I mean, as a whole, they're dumb. And it's part of that group, that group thing.
Is that group thing. Yeah. Well, I mean, I mean, ultimately like you look at it and you, it goes back to being polarizing. I think because everything's so polarized, everybody does want to sit on one side or the other, because they want to, I mean, we're so, people as a whole are tribal, like they want to be accepted. They want to be, they want to be accepted by others. And as a result, it's like, all right, you've got one issue or another issue, and they want to be on one side of it. As a result, it's like that just, it breeds group thing, which is a problem.
Yeah. Um, we definitely don't need to get into world politics, but all this stuff with Israel and Palestine. Back many years ago, I read a book called Son of Hamas. It's actually the kid of one of the founders of Hamas that as a kid, just like all Palestinian kids, they kind of head over to Israel and they throw rocks at tanks, you know, because they're from a very young age taught, kill Israel. I mean, it's, it's pretty crazy. Like now, we could get in on both sides, right? It's a very, very polarizing topic, especially right now, which I do not understand when I see a sign walking around that says LGBTQ for Palestine. Like you realize you're the first people they would kill, right? Uh, I don't, I don't get it. But in this book, it's, it's so crazy. There's kids throwing rocks at tanks, gets in a fight with an Israeli kid and they arrest him. And, uh, instead of taking him in, they could have put him in for however long they wanted. They just sat down with him in a room and said, why do you hate us? Why do you hate us? Like what have we done to you? And how can we rectify it? Like what, what do we need to do? And as the book goes on, he actually turns to Christianity. He lives in the United States now. I think he's protected because Hamas will just, he's on Hamas's radar. Um, Hamas didn't maybe start out as a terrorist organization. It is most definitely a terrorist organization now. But something they say in this book is the Gaza Strip got so populated, so heavily populated that it just turned to extremism. And if we look at any cities now, Chicago, LA, San Francisco, wherever, New York, Dallas.
They're polarizing places.
They're polarizing places. It's really scary. So I want to live in a small town that continues to have small town values, that values growth, but cares about the people so much that they understand the importance of small government.
Yep.
I mean, I've, I've seen our property taxes go up significantly.
Oh, that's, yeah, that's a hot topic right there.
When I go, I'm already paying you massive taxes.
Yep.
So then why are my property taxes going up? And I just looked at building another building, $40,000 at least in.
In impact fees?
Yes.
Yeah.
And it's like, wait a second, I'm paying you everything, paying you property tax. I'm paying sewer, I'm paying water, I'm paying, paying all this stuff. What impact fees? And where are these fees going? Like it's, it's really interesting stuff. Have you looked into any of that?
I have looked into impact fees quite a bit because when we built the new building, we did deal with impact fees. Um, and it's kind of frustrating because you pay these massive fees to basically get plugged into the grid to get electricity, to get water, have all that stuff. But then at the same time, you're still, I still paid to have my water main put in, subcontractor. I still paid to have power pulled. I had to, we had to move a power line. So a couple of big things we had to do. We need to move a power line. We had to, um, water was a big thing too. That was actually, for me, that was, that was actually a huge reason I wanted to run was, uh, impact fees are pretty wild. Um, and they charge them depending on what you're doing, what kind of business you have. And basically what they think the anticipated, like the anticipated use of your business for these X, Y, and Z things are, and they've got these categories that they'll, that they'll put your business into, they'll be like, all right, you're on this street, you're on this road, this is how many cars are going to be coming in. And they're going to try and calculate the fees based off of that.
Yeah.
To an extent, impact fees make sense. But then the issue, like you said, is that, well, why am I paying these property taxes? Why am I paying these impact fees as well? And one of the big issues that Rexburg has is that over half the, I want to say it's half the town, it might not be over half. It's around half the town is tax exempt properties. So because the church has such a big footprint here, because the university has such a big footprint here, they are tax exempt for paying property taxes.
Yeah.
Biggest issue there is you've got the school takes up a ton of land. They own a ton of land here in town. Um, a lot of it's land that would be taxed pretty high. It's all up on the hill. It's honestly, if you were a developer and you could acquire that land, be a prime place to put homes. But as a result, that's not, it's not taxed. So you've got half of the town not being taxed with property taxes. And the city has to make that up somewhere else.
Yeah.
The issue that it comes down to though, is how, how do we find a way to generate that revenue without taxing residents currently? Cause I don't want more property taxes. I don't want to see my impact fees go up. I don't want to see my utility fees go up. And ultimately we've got a lot of stuff at the city level that we don't necessarily need to be doing at the moment. And we need to be cutting back.
There's a camera right now.
We need to be, we need to be cutting back on those projects. One of the big ones is, um, and I'm not, first off, I want to clarify, I'm not saying these are bad projects. I'm just saying they're not projects we need to invest in right now.
And something we can even clarify here and now, I have no malice against anyone personally in the city as a person.
Yep.
Like, I know a lot of these guys, I worked for the city for 10 years.
They're customers of mine. Like they're friends.
Yeah. Same here. We, um, we get a lot of police officers through the door. We have a lot of first responders through the door. Friends with a lot of people in the city. As individuals, I don't know one person at the city that I go, ugh.
I know.
No, I've had great conversations with everybody at the city. Do I politically agree with everybody at the city? Absolutely not.
Politically at the city level, there's not a whole lot to agree and disagree on. To be honest with you, like it's not, it's not a left and right thing. It's a, cool. Let's make our city run efficiently. Let's not waste money. And let's make our town better.
I did hear about some people that voted for a guy that I didn't vote for. I'm like, what are you voting for? But then I want to have a conversation. Like, that's what so many people don't realize. And that's why I love this podcast. You could be super, you could be nearly Hamas. If you were Hamas, I'd probably put you in a rear naked choke and like, you know, at least put you out for a little while. Um, not permanently, but you know, a few seconds, just to show my dominance. We should be able to talk with everybody. And so just do want to preface this. I know we're already 20 minutes in, but preface with, we have no malice against anybody here. I want everybody at the city, from the mayor to the city council, to uh, city attorneys, to every, I want everybody to have a voice and I want the best for everybody. My idea of what's best is going to be slightly different than what's your idea for the best. And it's going to be slightly different than the mayor's. And that is what makes us America.
Yep.
The first amendment wasn't made for when I agree with you. It's made for when I disagree with you. It's made for when we hate somebody so that they can say what we hate.
Yep.
That's why the first amendment exists. So just prefacing it, we love everybody.
Yep. And like, they're friends, they're customers.
Yes.
Yep. They're, they're great people.
Yes.
But there's stuff the city needs to change.
Absolutely.
And so going back to that, I think the first thing that at the moment I don't see why we're spending money on is going to be some of the parks projects we have going on right now. Going back to that, a lot of the parks currently are used, an overwhelming majority of people that use parks within Rexburg are going to be, be people that don't pay property taxes in Rexburg. It's a lot of students. I mean, that's going to be the, if you go to a park, you kind of survey, all right, cool. That person, that person, demographically, a majority of them are students. Students are great. They help run our economy.
Absolutely.
Tons of students are customers. I'm sure that.
Yeah, we're sitting in a building right now that's 80% students.
It's funded by students. And, um, and ultimately that's not the students' fault that they don't pay property taxes. It to an extent is the school, like the school doesn't pay property taxes. The students come here for the school and as a result, like those students aren't funding. What's the best way to put this? You've got two levels that students essentially live in Rexburg. They go to school and they have apartment buildings that they live in.
Yeah.
The apartment buildings, those guys pay property taxes. Developers, apartment building owners, they're all paying property taxes and they pay steep, just like you and I do.
Yeah.
The school, on the other hand, doesn't pay property taxes. And so you've got this issue of the schools what draw the students here. They live in housing that pays property taxes. But the other half of the reason that they're here is totally tax exempt.
Yeah.
So if you look at it this way, it's like, all right, cool. The students pay property taxes through their landlords, but essentially half of that park that the students are using, when they're using it, isn't funded.
Yeah.
We need to figure out ways to increase that revenue, but I don't think we need to be spending money on park projects right now.
Yeah. Well, and not to derail the parks right now, but what becomes an issue is I've heard government, local government say, well, those students don't pay taxes. So they're your customer. We're letting them in the city now that you're your customer. So we get their tax through you. And I go, yeah, but I also have a physical therapist that comes to the gym here and I have several teachers who come to the gym here and we have first responders. We have people who pay property taxes. We have business owners. They pay property taxes here. And they're paying the same rates as the students pay, or sometimes students even get a discount. Why am I paying the students taxes through? Like that is a horrible argument.
No. And I mean, ultimately what it comes down to is that like, I'm an active member of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints. I went to BYU. I got a degree there. But we need to figure something out so that essentially it's not getting, so the, the school is more involved at a community level because those students do use resources within the town that ultimately aren't getting paid for through the school that doesn't pay property taxes.
Yeah.
We got to figure out a solution to that. Like.
Yeah, we're in a weird time because there's some national issues causing massive inflation. I mean, you know, queue, well, all the queue money supplies. Inflation just adding to the dollar. Printing billions of dollars for other countries, all this stuff. It increases inflation greatly. We all know what it costs to go to a grocery store right now. Consumer credit card debt is at an all time high. Vehicle sales are at a low since 2009. Home sales are at a low since 2009. Interest rates are higher than they've been in, what, 20 years? But then on a local level, I look at our price point and I go, we're paying employees more because they have to pay for food and they have to pay for apartments and they have to, so we're paying employees more. Our property tax has gone up 30, 40%. Our insurance has gone up 30 or 40%, but our rates have not gone up 30 or 40%. So that cuts growth out immediately.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
So, you know, we talk about Rexburg growing. Rexburg is cutting business owners' feet right out from underneath them because I want to grow. I've got land right there right now. I can add 17 employees to Rexburg right now, but we can't because.
Impact fees, property taxes, et cetera. And so I was actually talking to, so ultimately, um, property taxes in Rexburg, part of it goes, it's paid through the county. I'm sure you know that, like paid through the county, part of it goes to the city, part of it goes to the county. I was talking to Sean Boyce, who's the county tax assessor, kind of having a conversation with him on some stuff. And he was saying, he's like, I don't want to raise rates. Like I do not want to do X, Y, and Z. But he's like, the hard part is everybody this year, I'm sure you saw it, the amount that your home went up value wise, it was astronomical. It was massive. But you also look at it in comparison to, if you go look at your Zillow estimate compared to what the city assesses at, like there's a huge delta there. Like it is a massive difference. And so that's the nice part, like they are trying to keep property taxes down. I think that the issue though, is, is that we need to, we need to do things that are not, not luxury projects. Um, going back to the whole parks thing. Parks right now, next year, they're slated to spend like, I think it's around, I've got the numbers here actually. Let me just load this up. So. Okay. So new pickleball courts, the city wants to spend $370,000 on that next year. The new Teton River Park, they want to spend $811,000 on that.
Okay.
So I mean, immediately right off the bat, we're looking at 1.2 million, um, just for that. Do we maybe need more pickleball courts? Yeah. I live over in Summerfield. Students coming in all the time and using our pickleball, ball courts, um, that are technically the homeowners associations. Um, I don't think the city needs to be providing those right now. I think what the city needs to be doing is focusing on, on infrastructure projects. They need to be focusing on getting water mains in areas that we know are going to grow. We know everything's, a lot of growth is going to be up towards where the new temple is going to be. We know that there are new shopping centers going in up there.
Yes.
There's no water infrastructure there right now. I mean, there's, there's zero. Um, I know, I know somebody that wanted to do a project up there. And ultimately it was a locally owned business. They wanted to get this project going. They had, um, they were going to, local people owning it, local jobs that were going to be coming in. And the fees to get the water to where they wanted it to go were astronomical to subcontract that out. I mean, they were probably, just knowing what I paid to pull water 240 yards. My guess is that they were upwards of 800,000 to a million dollars just to pull water.
Yeah.
I feel like that's something the city should be doing. Ultimately, they're going to be running water along all of Second East.
Yeah.
They're going to be essentially paying for everybody else to get city connected water at their expense so that they can put their new business in. And then on top of that, they're also going to pay, they're going to pay, they're going to pay for water. But then they're also going to be paying impact fees upfront to connect to the water.
Yeah.
That seems really backwards to me when we're, when we're talking about spending 1.3 million just in new parks.
Yeah.
Why aren't we putting the water infrastructure into grow businesses? I mean, in that case, I mean, literally the stuff that we're spending on parks next year, what we're slated to spend on parks, we could put that water main in, have a mile and a half of water main. And then now all of a sudden, hey, guess what, guys?
We've got water for parks.
We've got water, well, we have water for parks. We have water for new businesses that are going to come in on there. We have water for apartment buildings. They're going to be up there. We have water for single family housing that's going to be up there.
Yeah.
That's, I feel like in my opinion, is going to grow the city. It's going to grow our tax base. It's going to do a lot more stuff than 1.3 million, 1.2 million in your car.
I agree with you fully and, and I, I really appreciate that view. You're seeing this as a business owner. That's the problem, right?
Well, and that's the thing. That's what I want to come into it. I don't want to, I think that that's the issue. The city, in order to grow the way that we want it to grow and in order to have the money that we want for these nicer. And in order to have the money that we want for these nicer luxury projects, we need to grow the next five, ten years as a business and not as a city.
Absolutely. I hated when I worked there. One, well, let me just preface this. Cherish, love, and don't regret my time working as a paramedic firefighter at all. Loved all the people that I worked with, incredible people. And down to everybody in the city that, that I got to work with. There were some. Organizational things that I was not a large fan of. Has nothing to do with the people that I've worked with. I just, like, something on this podcast is two lessons learned, right? Like, the whole idea is I want to learn from you. So I never want anyone to listen to this and be like, wow, Tyler really hates people. I don't hate people at all. I hate organization that. Puts organization above people.
Yep.
And I mean that in government. I mean that in religion. I mean that in large business.
Business, yep.
I mean it in everything. So the way that I look at a park is, it's a luxury. It's, it's great. A park doesn't cash flow though. So if I'm looking at, my property taxes are up, my insurance is up. I have to pay coaches more. I have to pay employees more. I now have to put them through certifications. Those are costing more. I need to make sure that my business is cash flowing.
Yep.
Before I can have real luxury items. If a park is a luxury, which it is, in my mind, we need, need to be looking at this as, we need to be cash flowing other parts. Now, I hated the term cash flow when I worked for the city, or when I worked for the fire department. You know, we need more.
Because it's all about getting more cash. It's about, if we don't spend this budget this year, then it's gonna get taken away.
Exactly. So I go, well, you're a government, you're not a business, so please don't say cash flow anymore. I would like you to actually use taxpayer dollars as the, the term here.
Yep.
Citizens' money.
Yep.
That, that they're working very hard for. And the, if you wanted to use cash flow. Let's just say that it's citizens' money and that's going to be coming from property taxes and different, different, you know, fees and, and things there. Let's say it for what it is. Don't cash flow. Now, when you tax and that becomes your quote cash flow. Now we have money for luxury items. But let's not buy a Lamborghini before we can pay for it.
Yep. A hundred percent. And really quick too, just because we were talking about how you worked at the fire department. If anybody in the fire department can explain to me the relationship between Madison County Fire, the city and the county, I would love to hear. And I've talked with a few people now and I want to understand it. I have gotten a different answer from every person that I've talked to.
Um, you know, I think a good person to go talk to would be, uh, well, one, Cory Child.
So I need to sit down with him.
Go, go talk with, uh, with Chief Cory Child. Um, another one that's been in the game for a long time is Ken Anderson. He's the. I don't know what he is. He's the fire services. He's the Madison, no, he's the district. See, it is.
See, that's the hard part. You have the, you have the city, the county, and then the fire district.
Yes.
That's one that I really want to understand better. Like, I don't quite understand the budget there.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I, it was all, uh, I don't wanna say weird, because it just is what it is. But at one point, the ambulance was up at the hospital, so it was city run. Then there was a county fire and like a district fire. And then the ambulance moved down with the fire. And at a little, for a time, it was like, they were separate. They, they were in the same building, but separate. They were separate, but equal. And um, then that all kind of glued together a little bit. And then we started putting remote stations out in Archer and up in Sugar City and.
Well, one person told me that like, the remote stations, like, those help take care of the county, like, the county does that. It's similar personnel that are running it. Um, I was talking to somebody last night and I kind of figured, based off some of the answers I had gotten from people that, in the city that work with the department. Okay, so the city pays for most of the stuff within the city, then county's manning Archer and Sugar City. There's nobody at Archer or Sugar City. There's no people there.
Do you know why those exist?
Tell me. I'm, I'm curious.
Solely for insurance purposes.
Oh, I mean, that makes sense. I mean, you're X number of feet or X number of yards away from a fire department, from a fire hydrant, you're.
The interesting part, and this is just where like my, what I feel like is a rational mind is maybe wrong. Or I think I'm right, but you know. Um, okay, yeah, a fire station's there. Who's manning it? Everybody in Rexburg. So I don't care if you have a fire station there. We may use apparatus from that station. But it's coming from somebody that's in Rexburg. So yeah, you might be a half a mile from a fire department. You're still seven miles away from people. So it's weird. And I get it. Like, it's all good. Um, stuff happens and, and things need to be done how they're done. Maybe they were done, they could have been done better, but you know, Rexburg has those stations. Eventually, they will be manned stations. During COVID, I, I manned Sugar City with one other person. Because, you know, government's response to COVID was like, well, let's do whatever the CDC says.
Yep.
And then it all turned out to be wrong.
Right. The, and I, I think to an extent, people were trying to, they were trying to do what they thought.
I totally agree.
I think there were people that were not doing what they thought was best.
Yeah. We shut down for six weeks because I, I, although I thought it was stupid. And I was like, I don't feel like this is right. I was still trying to do what was right.
Was right, exactly.
Fool me once, though.
I mean, we were, we were grateful. I'm grateful in that respect. Like, we were considered essential. Like firearms dealers, they considered us essential. I don't quite.
I don't know why a gym isn't considered essential. Yeah. The health, I mean, the, the people that didn't die from COVID are the healthiest ones on the planet, so.
I, I think part of it, what it ended up being is like, you've got a lot of Second Amendment groups that are very active. Like, if you shut down gun stores, like, you're getting sued.
Yeah.
Like, you look at like Firearms Policy Coalition, Gun Owners of America, like, you do pretty much anything, you're getting sued.
Yeah.
So I can understand it, but like, at the same time, like, we're worried about people being healthy. Why are we shutting gyms down?
Totally.
And I'm just, a lot of it didn't, looking back at it, even at the time, it didn't make sense. I mean, but.
The healthier I am, the better I shoot a firearm.
Yeah, well, better you shoot a firearm, like, you're less chance of getting sick, all that stuff. Um, and yeah, I mean, it's, I don't know, but at the city level, there's a lot of stuff that just, it currently, in my mind, it doesn't make sense talking with people. There's been some stuff that like, I personally do not understand. Why are we doing it this way? You talk with people, hey, why are we doing it that way? It still doesn't make sense to me. As a business owner, I see those inefficiencies. Um, going back to city budgets. Um, I think left, right, wherever you sit, what are like some of the key things that you think are? If, what would be like a key thing that you think government should provide, if you're left or right? And this is a hotly, this is a hotly contested topic here in Rexburg.
On the most basic level, government should only provide. Protection to our inalienable rights.
Yep.
So life, liberty, the pursuit of happiness, and then we can walk through all ten of those First Amendments.
What would you say the next one probably is? As far as services go?
Well, I might be a little more right than those people.
Roads. I mean, ultimately, like, there, there are people.
Well, so.
I understand some of your perspectives on this.
That's why Sam, I'm a little more, and I, when I say right, I'm not meaning correct. I mean, you know, on the spectrum. Whatever spectrum we're talking about. Um, it's interesting because roads suck.
Oh, yeah.
Roads suck bad. I popped a tire this year. I didn't want to be that guy, but I emailed the city, hey, popped a tire. Can I get, you know, a, a paper or whatever? And then they sent me this long list of papers to fill out so that they could take it before city council and see if they'll pay for my tire. And I was like, screw it. I'll just pay the thousand dollars and just get it done. But I pay, I pay taxes for those roads to be perfect. What used to happen, and this is where people will go, well, see, we need government for. Roads and emergency services. And well, what used to happen is if you had Madison Gymnastics Center and Guerrilla Performance. And Platte Electric and The Rock Gym and Teton CrossFit and, um, Electrical Wholesale and the airport and all of that. And it's connected to Main Street. You go, hey, guys, we need really good roads. So you know that tax that we would be paying to the city for them to essentially keep mediocre roads for us? How about we just hire a company and come make a great road?
Yep.
So I, I lean almost clear over there where it's like, if I drive five minutes. From my house to my business, to my places of recreation, I'm okay working with a group of people to keep that road perfect.
I think unfortunately, most people are a little bit different.
Yes, I agree.
And so, coming back to that, like, so now imagine this. Imagine you're paying property taxes. We're all paying pretty steep property taxes. And now imagine the city's gonna come in and they're gonna fix the road in front of your business, in front of your house, whatever. You're stoked about it. You're like, we're getting new roads. Potholes are getting taken down. Now imagine that they fix these roads and then they hit you with a ten thousand dollar bill. When they're done with it.
Absolutely.
Currently, that's happening in Rexburg. Um, Rexburg uses a process called Local Improvement Districts. They're within Idaho law, they can essentially, they can charge the homeowners and businesses on that road. To put in certain parts of the road at a rate that the city decides. Um, currently, the way that it works in Rexburg, it's curbs and gutters and sidewalk. You're gonna pay for that if they fix the street on your road, under a local improvement district. And there are people right now that, no joke, paid ten thousand dollars this year to have sidewalks put in front of their houses.
Like, I'll put in my own freaking sidewalk.
We'll get this too. And that's, oh, some people went to that level. You can do it. The city will quote it out, say, hey, this is how much it's gonna be. If you can't afford it, we put a lien on your house and you pay through it, through, pay through it with your property tax bill. That's wild to me. Like.
Yeah, that's so sad.
Like, it's so sad. And unfortunately too, the hard part is, is a lot of these local improvement districts, they're in older parts of the town that need those roads more.
Maybe there's not that income.
There's not that income, exactly. And so you've got people that are already like, they can't necessarily afford X, Y, and Z. They're scraping by with inflation right now. But hey, you gotta, you gotta pay up to have these sidewalks put in.
Yeah.
Or we're gonna increase, we're gonna put a lien on your house and we're, you're gonna pay it through. Basically, it's gonna become part of your property tax bill. We're gonna add this onto there. And you can pay as you go. And we're gonna charge you interest over time for it. It's wild to me. And then we're also spending, we're wanting to spend money on all these luxury projects.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not okay with that. This is more on a state level, but we had, we had a purchase and, um. Sent the Idaho State Tax, Tax Commission the purchase. And they looked at it and they said, you didn't pay enough for that. That's way undervalued. And I said, that's what I paid for it. And here's all the reasons why. It was an older project. And here's what it all is. And they went, well, you know, we looked at book values on all of this and it should have been double. So they took the tax money that we had paid on the original price that we paid, then threw on a penalty.
What?
Then threw on a lien. And when we went to do some, some refinancing on a fourplex that we have. There was a lien.
It affected it.
It affected it. And they're like, hey, we, the bank's like, hey, we can't beat this out. You guys have a lien. We're like, we shouldn't have a lien. Like, we pay everything. Where, that's very important to us. So we get digging into all of it. And the lady of the Idaho State Tax Commission, she said, well, look, if you want to get this done. And you want to get it done fast, you have to pay that penalty. And then I'll email the lien people. And let them know that you have paid the original tax. So they'll take off the lien, but I can't do anything until you pay the penalty.
Yep.
I said, well, but that way, that penalty is on the part that I never had to pay.
But the lien people won't take the lien off unless they see it's all clear.
Yeah. But I'm paying a penalty on something that I never had to pay in the beginning.
Yep.
So not only did we pay six percent tax on something that had been sold twelve times previous. So the state has gotten more money from taxes than they ever got, uh, than, than the original product cost. They've got more in taxes over its six, seventy year life than the original cost of, of what it is. It, it's an airplane. Okay. I bought a little airplane. It was a little airplane, fifteen thousand dollar, two seat airplane. And so fifteen thousand, you know, you take taxes from that and you're, let's just do math, because I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna make anyone mad here. So.
So I mean, nine, nine hundred dollars in sales tax?
Yeah, probably. You're better at math than I am. Yeah. Nine hundred. So nine hundred in sales tax. Now that's been sold twelve times. So nearly the original price.
It's been paid.
Of taxes or of the airplane has been paid to taxes again. So then, you know, we go to pay the nine hundred in taxes. We pay it. And they go, that plane's worth more than fifteen thousand dollars. Okay, well, here's the receipt. Here's the guy's number. Here's the bank account that it came out of.
Sale.
Yeah, it's the bill of sale. Okay, well, you have to pay that penalty on the thirty thousand, because we assessed it at thirty thousand. So here's a five hundred dollar penalty.
How long ago was this?
Um, this was eight months ago.
Okay. We should talk a little bit after this.
Yeah.
Cause I had a similar thing happen and I ended up having to, I was able to finagle, not finagle, but it was basically like. I figured out I could coordinate it between the enforcement side of it that was like, well, you have to pay this penalty. And then the lien side of it, we kind of got it worked out.
Yeah.
But yeah, it's, it's a pain.
Yeah.
The state tax commission office is always.
Yeah, I don't normally as conservative as, uh, people say it is. Uh, I know another business who, they do wedding services. So they provide, um, a wedding venue. Literally, someone from the State Tax Commission said, if it's fun, it's taxable. So a wedding might not be fun, but that's only ten minutes of the six hours that they're there.
Yep.
So you have to pay sales tax on everything else. And they're like, wait, where in the tax code does it say if it's fun, it's taxable? And they're like, well, there's room to wiggle within the tax code and that's where we're going with it.
Oh, yeah.
You're like, dude, this is insane.
So, and I think what it all goes back to, now imagine if there wasn't all of, I don't know. Imagine that if government worked with business to solve these problems so that we were growing businesses more.
Absolutely.
So that, alright, let's say that maybe, going back to sales tax, it's like, alright, like, you're paying a penalty or whatever. Instead of you paying that penalty, what if you invested that money back into your business? You get a ten times return on it over the next five years.
Yeah.
And it's like, how much more sales tax revenue is generated as a result of that, instead of paying this penalty and doing that?
Absolutely.
And I mean, that's, at the core, but that's a huge reason that I want to run for city councils, because I think that we can, we can capitalize on some of those efficiencies. So that we're growing Rexburg and we're not necessarily doing it in a way that we're taxing people more.
Yeah.
Um, another, another thing that people in Rexburg should be aware of, that some people are excited about, some people are talking about. Um, they're trying to, there's a lot of talk about approving a new recreation district. I don't know if you've heard about that.
I've not.
So, um, you've got Rexburg Rapids, which by all measures is kind of, it's kind of flopped. The city loses money on it every year.
Yeah.
Um, it was a lot of money to produce. They're, the city's paying way more than what they're getting out of it.
Open four months.
It's open, it's open two months out of the year. Like, it's over, yeah. And so what they want to do is they want to do an indoor rec center, put a gym in there. They want to do a swimming pool. They want to do all of this stuff. Cool. Um, ultimately, the way that some people want to do it and some people want to do it that are running for city council right now is. They want to prove a rec district so that they can, in, basically, it'll end up increasing property taxes here within the county and within the city.
That it will?
It will, it will. Um, and I think that there are ways, personally, I think there are ways that we could probably do it that wouldn't raise taxes. I'm not against having a rec center. I've got a, I've got a four year old son that I would love to have someone, somewhere for him to go during the winter to go.
Yeah.
Go play, be outs, not necessarily be outside, but be getting energy out that isn't ten degrees outside. I would love that. But I don't want to do it at the expense of the taxpayer. And I don't necessarily think that it's something that we need to be increasing property taxes for. One thing I will say, that as, if I am elected to city council, I will not vote to raise your property taxes to fund a rec center. Like, will not do that.
Yeah.
I think that there are solutions that we can come to that aren't gonna result in property tax increases. Let's find those solutions instead of just defaulting to. We can have taxpayers pay for it, so we can increase property taxes. We'll do it that way, because that's the easy solution.
Well, we both know very moral, morally and ethically based capitalists. That would love to fund a rec center.
Yep.
And the thing is, our property taxes are gonna go up. Then, who knows? I mean, even with schools and stuff, you're gonna get. Um, oh, what do they call that? A bond.
Yep.
You know, different things like.
And that's essentially what they want to do, to do a bond for.
So you're doing a bond, you're raising property taxes, and then you're still charging people to go. So how about we work with a business and we say, hey, no impact fees.
Yep.
No property taxes for the first ten years. After that, we're gonna go to half property taxes for the next ten years, and then a quarter for the next ten years.
You make it easy for them to come in and do that project.
For them to come in.
Yep.
Now they can have lower prices, which are gonna be priced the same or lower than the city's even going to charge. It's going to be run efficiently because it's actually run by a business person instead of someone who has been in politics for their entire life. Like, there are so many solutions that are private based, that if government and people could actually be a government by the people, for the people, and of the people, we would be thriving.
Well, here's the crazy part. I know of projects that, I won't say it's a full blown rec center, like what the city wants to do with an indoor pool and gym, all that stuff. It's not quite to that level. But I know business owners that have, like, I have seen plans for stuff like that, that people want to do. But ultimately, it's property taxes, impact fees. It's all of that stuff that cuts into their bottom line and doesn't make it a sustainable project. So that's where government comes in and says, hey, like, we want to do this.
Yeah.
And you're talking a hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah. When you're talking a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in fees before you even get, before you even start construction.
It hurts.
You can't do it.
It hurts. And I, and I think that's where it comes back to like, we need people within city government that are going to help make those decisions. And have more of a business minded. Have more of a business mind and have the ability to be like, hey, I've dealt with it on this side of the table. So how can we, how can we figure out a way to make this work? And currently there's nobody on city council that. That really has a ton of that background to do it.
Can you promise to get a Twitter account and just do some mean tweets?
I've, I've got a Twitter account. Nobody follows me on it. I, I, I don't think I've ever publicly posted on it.
Who uses Twitter?
I don't know. Instagram and even that I, I'm so busy with the shop right now that my personal Instagram page, I was looking at it this morning. I think I posted, it was like four months ago.
That's awesome.
I don't know. I'm on there all the time. I'm still wasting time on it, but. It's just posting and doing other stuff for the business.
That's awesome.
So what, what other questions that people have?
So I know we, we have touched on a lot of these, but um, we'll just ask them individually. Uh, what are your plans to keep, keep up with the aging infrastructure of the town?
So there's two things that go into play there. You've got um. You, Idaho Department of Transportation is in charge of the two major arteries within Rexburg, which is going to be Main Street and Second East. That is all Idaho Department of Transportation's authority right there. I think that number one, what needs to happen is the city needs to be working more hand in hand with Idaho Department of Transportation. I, I've heard that there's some. I don't say hard feelings, but like they've gone back and forth on some stuff before and it's not necessarily always the best relationship there. But I've also talked with people that are like, when we're actually interacting with Idaho Department of Transportation, things are getting done. So we need to be more active with that. I think that we need people on city council that are not afraid to call up. Pick up the phone, dial and be like, hey, what do we need to do to fix this instead of sending an email that gets lost amongst a ton of other emails? I've heard that's a pretty big issue within the city is it's like, oh, I sent him an email two weeks ago about this, like haven't heard back yet. Well, let's pick up the phone, dial them, call them up and figure out a solution right now. And I know there are people within the city that are pushing for more of that and I'm a hundred percent there. I, I hate texting. I hate texting. I, I won't say I hate emailing because a lot of stuff gets done via email, but I don't think there's anything better than picking up the phone and being like. Hey, let's solve this problem right now. Let's figure it out. Maybe that's the, the guy side of me, the man side of me that just wants to fix it this second. But I think we need to do some more of that. Um, I think the other road side of it too is. We need to be budgeting for it better and we need to be more efficient with how we're doing it as well. There are some things that the city is looking into as far as different ways to fix roads that would be more efficient. I think a lot of it is that the road infrastructure is just really, really old. And so you gotta go in and you gotta, you gotta take stuff down and you gotta rebuild it back up. And in order to do that, we need to be, we need to be working on finding. There's grants that we, the city needs to be getting from the state and federal government in order to do it. Cause at the moment, the city's revenues can't, can't sustain it. But what it goes back to is we got to figure out ways to increase the city's revenue without increasing the tax burden on the citizen.
And then how do you get those grants without owing something to the?
Well, that's the other problem too, is that you do owe something to the state or the federal government when you do that. And I mean, going back to it, like, we got to figure out a way to, to raise revenues and run more efficiently that isn't burdening the taxpayer currently. And the best way to do that is going to be to focus on those key infrastructure projects, figure out ways that people can come in, do business here, can come in. Develop more property so that you have the tax base, you have the property taxes to help kind of lift everything else up. It's not through, it's not through taxing everybody else more. It's about figuring out a way to. I want to really clarify here, there's increasing taxes and there's increasing the tax base. And the solution is not increasing taxes, it's increasing the tax base. It's figuring out ways to bring businesses in here. Lift the economy up and basically drive more business into Rexburg so that we have more sales tax revenue. There's more property tax on developed projects. And nobody on city council has ever sat on the other side of developing a, I take that back, I, Mike Walker, I believe has before with Paul. With Paul, with uh, Paul Mitchell.
And I mean, Mike has done a few, you know, he had that oxygen supply company, Mike, Mike is very business minded.
And so, and I think that that's one of the, one of the great things there and I, we need more people on city council that can help figure out ways to draw businesses in. Draw more jobs into Rexburg and, and increase the tax base and not increase taxes. Cause I don't want to pay more taxes.
For sure.
I don't want to pay more impact fees.
That does play into one of the questions. One of the questions was, how will he help with the raising property taxes? That makes sense. Build the tax base, but not increase taxes.
Exactly. And I mean, part of that too is we need to be working with the county on stuff as well. I think fortunately, like I do, I don't always agree with Sean Boyce on everything. Um, I do have a really good relationship with Sean Boyce, who's the town, county tax commissioner. And we're able to sit down, have a good conversation on stuff, not necessarily agree on everything, but come to an understanding with it. And I think. I think that's a good thing. I think the city and the county need to work together more on some stuff. One topic that is kind of taboo in Rexburg that I might catch some flat for this, I think we all want more restaurants here in Rexburg. Like, we don't have a whole lot of variety. Everything's pretty small. A lot of reasons that bigger restaurants like your Outbacks, Texas Roadhouse, um, Chipotle, a lot of these bigger.
Alcohol.
It's alcohol. Exactly. And currently the way that the county and the city alcohol laws are written, they are so. They're so out of whack and intertwined that you can't come in and you can't come in and open a business. And I, unfortunately, there's a lot of people within the city that. They don't want there to be more alcohol here in Rexburg. I don't drink. I don't drink at all. It's not something that interests me at all. Like even from a non-religious perspective, I don't believe that it's good to put into your body. But it's like, I want more businesses here. I want more of that revenue. And unfortunately, everybody, everybody in Rexburg that wants to drink, they're still going to drink. I mean, they're either going to have it at home or they're driving to St. Anthony. They're driving to Rigby, they're driving to Idaho Falls and then they're driving back.
Well, that's the interesting part. You and I are both of the same faith and um, I think, yeah, at this point, we all know what that is. And it's so weird how intertwined within the government is also that faith. But really the base is people need to choose for themselves.
Which is a core belief of our faith as well.
Which is a core belief. So are we being. More Christ-like by saying, make your own choices? Or are we being more like Satan and saying, I'm taking this choice away from you? It's really interesting. It's a very interesting dichotomy.
It's, it's almost a paradox in some ways. Like, it's very paradoxical.
I can see what people are saying. Hey, we don't want bars in Rexburg because that might increase drunk driving. That might, it's happening anyways. They're just going somewhere else to do it.
And there's also ways to get around that too. Like ultimately, um, so Utah's done some stuff that I feel like is written very well. If it's over a certain X amount percentage of sales or alcohol, they can change the way that it does, basically on if you can get permitted for it or not. So there's that there. The other thing though is um, most of these restaurants that want to come in, the services that you and I want like. I think it's safe to say, everybody in Rexburg would love more eating options. And in order to do that, we got to change some of the alcohol laws at the city and the county level. Not necessarily the most popular thing. But I think we don't get behind, we want more options to eat at. We want these national businesses that are going to bring in high-paying jobs that are going to help develop Rexburg. But we need to change some stuff to make that work. Albeit like, I don't like alcohol. I don't drink. I don't think it's healthy. But at the same time, like, I can sit back, step back and realize, hey, like, people are going to make X, Y, and Z decisions. Regardless of if it happens in Rexburg or not. I think in every way, the healthier solution is going to be to allow it both from a business side in Rexburg. Not having people drunk, drive drunk back to Rexburg. I'm going to have it closer to home. I mean, as, as wild as that sounds like. I've got a lot of friends both um, at the county level, um, and at the city level that work in law enforcement. And the amount of people that leave Rexburg, honestly, it's students that leave Rexburg, go get drunk, drive back. It's really high. And, and I mean, ultimately like. We're making Rexburg a less safer place by, by forcing people to make that choice elsewhere.
I could see that.
So.
That's interesting. It's an interesting how one decision that we think is such a good decision.
It's got layers to it.
Be worse. Um, we, we did chat about this and I think to get a, a really solid answer, we're going to need to understand the relationship between the fire district. The county and the city a little more, but uh, the question is how to better support and equip the emergency services, law enforcement. And law enforcement, especially in regard to the old and unsecured police station to keep with the population growth.
So a police station is an interesting topic. I've talked with a few people about that. It's really old and because it's really old, the city doesn't necessarily want to invest money in it. And I feel like a lot of people, especially, I don't know, I'm not, I'm not speaking for the police department. I'm not speaking for anybody within the police department. Um, but there's definitely, it seems like some people that are like, hey, like, why is it that? Oh, you know how it is. There's always that constant rivalry between police and fire. And it's like, they've gotten this new, they got the remodeled station a few years ago. Why are we still here with the police department? It's got aging plumbing, plumbing that doesn't work. Unsecured parking lot. They're literally parking in, what's the city parking lot? The Wells Fargo parking lot. Like, they share it with a bunch of other people. And I think the. I know that they're currently budgeting for a new police department and putting that somewhere else. There's been talk of what they want to do is, is do a joint. Basically a joint city and county building and then putting the police department within that. And kind of moving it more into town is what I understand too. Which talking with people within the police department, they don't necessarily think that's the best solution. Especially considering, personally, I think it would make a lot more sense to put it near one of the major, major entrances and exits to highways. So they can get around the city better. But I mean, that does need to be a priority. I think that. One thing that really bothers me, um, currently, there's a lot of police officers within the city that are spending their own personal money for their duty equipment. Like that, in my mind, that is a major issue. I mean, I think that it's great and it's awesome that our first responders recognize that they need X, Y, and Z gear. In order to do their job to the best of their ability and that they're willing to invest in themselves, but the city needs to be investing in that. I mean, I think it's, personally, I think that's pretty gross. I mean, you've got guys that are honestly spending a huge chunk of change, like. Full percentage numbers of their income every year to get equipment that they need to do their job at work that the city, the city's not providing.
Yeah. Aside from equipment, um, I, I coach, um, you know, some military and squat, uh, squat. I just love to squat. So I say squat, SWAT, police officers, military, first responders. And um, specifically coach some SWAT members just for free, which I love. Like, I love it. They're the most dedicated people that I coach. Um, and they don't pay. They don't pay because they don't have a budget. You need to be the fittest people out there. You need to be prepared for the unknown and the unknowable. And I've been in that world. I've been in the emergency services side of it as far as being a paramedic and a firefighter. And I was a SWAT medic. I understand it. I love to coach them. It's really sad to me that these guys are going, well, they have to pay for their own gym, gym membership. Then they come to me and they're like, hey, what do you, what do you charge? And I go, you're, I understand. I don't charge you, you know, cause.
You've been there.
I get it. There's no budget for that. We need to be having, and then you hear about officer-involved shootings. Fifty bullets fly and one grazes the individual. Nothing against any of those police officers. This is a systemic organizational issue. So every Friday, my guys dry fire Friday. They put on a vest, they run, they do burpees, they do air squats, they do kettlebell swings and they dry fire. Cause I do not want to have one person that I coach that doesn't know how to have. A high acuity shot. Not placed perfectly.
Well, and I mean, that's the thing too, is it's like, the city needs more, we need to figure out a way to change that budget and we need to figure out a way to mold that budget. So that we are at the core, providing those essential services. And there's a lot of stuff right now that is not essential services. And we're not providing the essential services. We're not providing the training that our officers and first responders need in order to do their jobs. And I, I think that that's, in my mind, it's disgusting. Like, it's not to try and get polarized on one side or the other on it, but it's just like.
Now, these are people that dedicate their lives to low-paying jobs.
So that they can protect you and I and our families.
Yep, exactly. And, and we're not giving them.
We're not giving them the resources that.
And then part of their low income is going to.
Towards the stuff that should be getting provided for by the city. So. I don't know. It's, it's a difficult issue and I think that, I think that that needs to be prioritized big time. I think that. I would like to see, I would like to see people within city council sit down more with, like, I know that um. I know that the mayor and the city CFO sit down with the department heads, go over budgets. Why isn't city council more involved in that? I know that certain city council members are, but why aren't we involved in that as a whole? Why, like, why isn't the community more aware of some of these issues? I mean, that goes back to it too. Like the city, I would love to figure out a way for the city to be more, more out there, more on social media, posting things about. This is X, Y, and Z that's going on within the city. But yeah, no, first responders, I mean, that's a huge one. Like, we need to get a better gear. We need to get it so that they're not paying for that gear out of their own pocket. I mean.
Yeah, that's number one. Like, and they need great gear. You know, they can't be out shooting high points.
Well, yeah. And I mean, that's the thing. And I think that uh, I think that's something that needs to be prioritized. And I really, really want to make that a priority getting on city council.
Okay, so you're going to promise staccatos to every duty member?
Hey, you know what? We should, I'm, I'm all for figuring out a way for. For staccatos to be the new duty weapon, or at least being approved duty weapon.
Man, they're so great. You just purchase accuracy.
Like, I may or may not be carrying one right now.
Oh, one's on my car. In fact.
In fact, I saw it in the car when I was walking.
We need to get a picture. My car's locked, by the way, everybody. And my car notifies me when you're close to it, so don't even think about it. And it may or may not have a system that has firearms integrated into its security system. No, just kidding. No, I don't have a Cybertruck yet. We need to get a picture for this episode. We might as well do it with staccatos.
I'm down.
Okay.
I'm down.
Anything else, man?
Um, I mean, biggest thing is number one, going to be getting out, getting out next Tuesday, voting. I would really, really appreciate your guys' vote. Like I said before, ultimately I'm running because I'm really invested in Rexburg. I love Rexburg. I've got, I've got a young family. Um, my wife is an immigrant to this country. I've seen what things are like in other countries. Like, she recently became a US citizen. This will actually be the first election she'll be able to vote in. Which will kind of be cool. I'm really excited about that. But like, I've got a young, growing family. And I think I can bring some, some background to city council that's not necessarily there right now. Trying to think other big things that I would want to hit on. I mean, that's going to be the biggest thing. We need to figure out a way to grow sustainably. We need to figure out a way to keep traditional values within Rexburg. And we need to figure out a way to, to entice businesses to come and do a business here. If we can entice businesses to do business here in Rexburg, we can bring better jobs for everybody. We can bring in more tax revenue. Through increasing the tax base and not increasing taxes. And we can make Rexburg a better place. We can hopefully down the road, five, 10 years, we can afford those luxury projects like parks. We can afford to, to be. Build bigger, better parks within Rexburg. But let's figure out that foundation right now. Let's start on that, that base layer, get it strong and then go from there. And I mean, that's why I'm running is because I think, I think I've got a little bit of experience dealing with the city from the other side of the table. Want to bring that and uh, and just figure out a way to make Rexburg cash flow better, going back to that. Cash flow better, have the money so that we can provide the equipment to our first responders that we need, so that we can fix roads, so we can have better snow removal here in town. And I'm, I'm, I'm running because I see the problems that you and I have, the problems that everybody in Rexburg has. And I want to come in and I want to come help address those.
Absolutely. Uh, that was such a great way to close, but then another question popped into my head that someone had asked. What's up with Rexburg and that smart city crap?
I don't quite know. That's one that I've like tried to get into a little bit more, like without.
Yeah, look, look into it. It's very interesting.
I've asked some questions about it.
My guess is some bureaucrat. Wanted, thought it was cool, so they signed up for it.
My understanding, that's what a lot of it is. I haven't asked those individuals specifically, so I don't want to say for sure. That's what it is. That's what I've heard.
So I don't think it's signing us up for, to be a smart city, but it's to bring a conference here. Which anytime you bring something here or you have a grant, you owe them something. So they bring that here, they teach everybody how great a smart city is, which is essentially surveilling every single.
It's integrating everything so that it's all in one central. Like, it's, it's trying to create conveniences, but it's really easy to take those conveniences that they're wanting and then flipping it into surveilling. I mean.
Yeah, I will take freedom and liberty, liberty over convenience and safety.
Hundred percent, hundred percent. So, all right, now I'm going to, we're going to go, I'm going to go on a tangent here. So I lived in, um, I lived in Seoul, Korea for a couple of years. It's like the second most densely populated city in the world. It is way convenient. You can take subways, buses, wherever, wherever you are in the city, you've got wifi. Just like super, super convenient stuff like that. But ultimately, you don't have the same liberties. You don't have the same freedom. Tax rates are way, 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 way higher. Like, if, if we think that we're paying high property taxes here in Rexburg right now, high income tax here in Idaho. Go look what it is in a lot of these cities that are highly integrated. It's a lot higher. You're paying for the convenience one way or another. And at the end of the day, like, I'd rather have more freedom and I'd rather have less taxes. I, I can, I will tell everybody right now, I will not vote to increase your taxes at all. Like, that is a promise there. I do not want to increase your taxes. I will not vote for projects that increase your baseline taxes. But let's figure out a way to, to increase that tax base. Sorry to go on a little. But let's figure out a way to, to increase that tax base. Sorry to go on a little, little tangent there, but like that convenience comes with a cost and it's, it's taxes. So, but any other questions, anything, other questions people had wanted to know about?
No, no, no. Uh, that was really good. No, I really appreciate you. I've appreciated our friendship over the years and let's keep it up.
Heck yeah. Let's go shoot.
I agree.
We need to do it.
I haven't really shot since the last tactical games.
What are you doing tonight? Like tonight, six o'clock, we've got a, we've got a car, we had a carbine competition.
Oh, really?
Every Thursday, six o'clock, we usually do some sort of shoot. It's either pistol, two gun, we'll do carbine stuff. Kind of more like your tactical games, USPSA, multi-gun type stuff. Super, pretty low round counts. Usually it's sub 150 rounds. Like just a fun way, good community. Come out, check it out and come shoot. Even if you're a beginner, you've never shot before. If you're into CrossFit and you maybe are thinking about getting into tactical games, this would be a good way to try the shooting side of it. And yeah, come, come out.
We were in Austin last week and, uh, we were down at a CrossFit competition. It was awesome. Have you heard of Sheepdog Response?
That's Tim Kennedy's company, right?
So it's, I had actually written him and I was like, hey, Tim, what's the possibility of having a private lesson with you, a private jujitsu lesson? He wrote back, he's like, zero possibility, man. Like I have no time. Doesn't matter how much you pay me, no time. Like can't do it. But you know, drop into a class and you know, I might be there.
He's, so okay, I've had the opportunity to meet Tim Kennedy and I don't always agree with everything he says. Like he is, within the firearms community, he is very polarizing. It's like people love him or hate him. There's not a whole lot in between. He's a really cool dude in person. I had an opportunity to bump shoulders with him at an event down in Utah. One of the, at, at the, the personal like surface level, he is a super humble dude, even though that might not be. He comes off on social media, but.
Oh, you gotta build your brand somehow.
Super nice guy.
So we're, we're there and, um, I, we're watching an event, like just a sweet event. They're max deadlifting. So much fun to watch. And I pull up Instagram and I look and three hours ago, Tim Kennedy was right there, like at the competition, but he was outside at the Go Ruck tent. And he was rolling jujitsu. And I'm like, what the crap? So we went out there and it was really cool. They were running this course where you do fitness.
Oh, I saw you post about.
It was so much fun. I saw this. I'm like, that's my whole life culmination into one event. And, uh, so they told me the time. They're like, you know, the fastest time today has been, uh, like one fifty-six, minute and fifty-six seconds. So not, not very long. You do a little fitness workout with sandbags, then you go over, slap hands with their black belt. He mounts you and then your idea is to better your position from the bottom. So you've just worked out, you're tired. Now you have to fight. So better your position from the bottom. So I get up on my side, grab his knee, push back. Wanted to show him like, hey, I know a little bit of jujitsu, man. So like I grabbed his leg and then flipped my leg up, almost like I was going to take his back. And he's like, hey, that's, that's, that's enough. Then you go over and you grab a gun, um, which is an air gun, uh, like a laser.
Oh, they're running like one of those cool fire systems or something like that. Yeah.
So two to the chest, one to the head and then five single targets, bam, 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 bam. And then five single targets on, uh, well, mag change, bam, 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 bam. And then on the way back, bam, 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 mag change and then five to the chest as fast as you could. And I won.
Heck yeah.
It was sweet. It was awesome. I was like, finally I win something in my life. So it was, it was way cool. And then, so I sent that to my jujitsu coach and he's like, hey, we need to, we need to do this, like something along those lines. It'd be fun to set something up to where we could bring in some jujitsu mats.
Oh dude, let's figure it out.
Roll jujitsu. I mean, obviously make it super safe. So you know, firearms are in one spot. We go, we roll. Everyone puts on eye and ear protection. We shoot. Okay. Firearms are clear. They're down. Eyes and ears come off. Go roll, like can make some fun self-defense classes out of that.
Yeah, we should talk more about that. I was actually thinking about that this morning. I want some ideas that I think between tactical fitness stuff and, and shooting, there's some.
Yeah. Even in jujitsu the other day, he's like, hey, uh, we're going to do a, a cuffing takedown. And I was thinking like, oh, like the cuff of my arm, like, you know, the cuff of my sleeve. No, we like.
We're going to cuff the guy.
The guy. Yeah. We didn't have handcuffs, but how do you get them into the position, knee in a certain spot? It was cool.
That's rad.
So you do that sort of thing, bring in some law enforcement, bring in some patriot citizens that just want to.
And we've got people that want to do that stuff here in Rexburg. Let's figure out a way to do it.
I'd love to. Dude, it was fun.
Let's, yeah, let's figure it out.
Maybe one of the funnest minute, I can't say that, but one of the funnest minute in forty-four seconds of my life.
That's fun. That looked like a fun event. Watching all your stuff from it, it was, it was cool.
Dude, events like that are so cool. You're, you're, these, these people are the elite of the elite in CrossFit. So obviously a very niche, but in that niche, they are complete celebrities. And you walk up to them and you're like, hey, I'm Tyler. And they're like, oh yeah, I'm Rich Broning. Like, yeah, I know.
I know who you are.
Yeah. I've watched you win the games several times. Bro, like don't be nervous. I just work out. I'm very normal. Where are you from? I'm from Idaho. I was elk hunting in Idaho just the other day. Oh, sweet. Okay.
Dude, and that's the thing. So many people in those communities, like they're normal people, like everybody else. And like, they just have the same interests that we do. They're exceptionally good at it though. So.
It's really cool.
Yeah. Well, let's figure out a way to bring some of those events to Rexburg. Let's do it.
Yeah, let's, let's chat about it. I really appreciate today. Really appreciate all that you're doing. Appreciate that you're running. Good luck to you in the future.
Thanks. Thanks for having me on.
You know, whatever you need and you let me know.
Yeah. Everybody get out and vote next week. I'd appreciate your vote. Let's, uh, let's make some results for Rexburg. Let's, let's make Rexburg awesome.
Make Rexburg great again.
There may or may not be someone like running on that, an American candidate.
That's awesome. Have a good day, man.
Thanks, man.